Yeah, it's there. Oh, so we can just scroll down it as well. Okay. And maybe the easiest way.
All right.
Thanks for coming.
Yeah, appreciate you all looking great.
We cut through your office here today.
Now we get to say hello. Looks pretty good. But you're by sea.
Yeah.
I call a former of the South County Board of Education regular and regular period on pledge. I've already played 25. Please go ahead for a moment. All right. Art. Art.
Allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God in principle with liberty and justice.
Ladies and gentlemen, please be seated on behalf of Dr. Chad Maynor, our principal of Bandys High School, and Dr. Matt Stover, my big boss, and the honor to be here tonight with the school board and all the great things the school board has done to support Bandys as well as the other top 10 schools in the top 10. The theme I have here tonight is some of my younger cadets. The good news is Bandys did make the daddy championship for Grill as well as the record against the Oregon National for working through the administration stuff now to continue their honor now and only just on the competition with Bandys Society. Our daddy's now 300 and 400, which is our senior program. Quite a formidable competition. The youngest member of the color guard I got tonight is a new lady that is a cadet star at Golden Hill to receive sophomore training. Second year in Army Area Conference, she comes up on the drill team. This is actually regulation drill and expedition drill very quickly. Volunteer to come out tonight as a student. School board color guard. And next, cadet Tony Phillips, who is a junior. So. And one of my members that had to do his leadership role for these two. Our cadet, he also came up on the drill team. Based on our competition. Then the next student cadet, a result is cadet Larry Backer, who is new at Bandys High School. Color guard, community regulation color guard, person at Army Area Conference. Currently looking into psychology, she was a resident in the government. And the next student cadet, Larry Backer, is a racing candidate. And that candidate is also a sophomore candidate. During the track team. Please pursue all of your mother footsteps of the earth. Earth. Top 10. Probably don't hear it often. Many people still have it. Have it more than 20 years ago. Doing the action job, getting these old suits on. Thank you.
Thank you, Lieutenant Earl Green and your cadets.
Oh, God. All right. Ace. All right.
Next on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from the January 27th Cobb County Board of Education meeting. Everyone's had a chance to look over the minutes from that meeting. Is there any discussion?
From last school board meeting.
I think.
Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, let's have a raise of hands who approve. Anamis. Next is the adjustment and approval of the agenda. Over.
Chairman Settlemyer, members of the board, the only thing that we're looking at is no need for closed session this evening. We were able to do that in our work session earlier today. So to the two removals for the policies, we took off the work session. Obviously, we're going to remove here this afternoon, which would be the attendance policy and school admissions. Number 10, the approval or protocol of the Immigration Customs Enforcement, we're asking for that to be removed as well. And this time, that is it.
Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, I would ask for a motion to approve the adjustment approval.
Mr. Chairman, I make the motion to approve the agenda with the adjustments presented.
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, it's the raise of hands for those who approve. Ladies and gentlemen. Next, we have the superintendent's report for recognitions.
Yeah, thank you, Chairman Settlemyer, members of the board. We do have two recognitions this evening. If you would like me to meet me out front.
Right, so our first recognition this evening is a run over from last month is Mrs. Lindsay Farnsworth. She wasn't able to be with us last month, but we want to make sure we give her the proper recognition. She's our administrator of the month for Fred T. Ford High School. Ms. Farnsworth has done a lot since she's been at Fred T. Ford High School, one of the which that stands out is not only her commitment to instruction, but her relationships that she's built with staff and students. We also want to thank Ms. Debbie Pitts, her assistant principal, who's here with her tonight, and her husband, Mr. Farnsworth, one of our instructional coaches, and Mr. Schrader for joining us. Let's give Ms. Farnsworth a big round of applause. All right, so for those of you who don't know, the public and anyone listening along, our Board of Education is required to have training hours every month, every year, pardon me, and one of our board members exceeded the 31-hour mark and has received a certificate from the North Carolina School Board Association for the 23-24 year school year, and this certificate of merit is to Ms. Michelle T. Let's give her a round of applause. Thank you all.
Now we will do a public hearing on the budget and following right after that will be public comments.
The Catawba County Board of Education appreciates and welcomes all public comments. Members of the public who have signed up to speak may address board members on any topic of concern during the public comment section of a regular meeting. Each speaker will be allowed a maximum of three minutes to address Catawba County Board of Education members. A time clock will be displayed to assist each speaker with their three-minute time limit. Speakers should direct their comments to board members rather than to the audience. Comments by members of the public should be respectful without slander toward any other member of the public, community member, or members of any member of the Board of Catawba County Board of Education. Any displays of approval or disapproval are out of order unless otherwise directed by the board chair.
Okay, now we will hear a public hearing on the 25-26 budget.
Chairman, there is no one signed up to speak on the budget.
Straight on to public comment then.
First person who is signed up for public comments is Mr. Matt Sin, if you'll come forward, please. Yes, sir.
Thank you all, everybody. esteemed Board of Education, thank you all for giving me the opportunity to speak. My name is Matt Sin. I'll happily say that I was born and raised in North Carolina and educated in the public school system K through 12. What I'd like to speak about today is an issue that I think we're all concerned about. In, as we all know, we gave the Pledge of Allegiance, One Nation Under God. As we all know, his son in Matthew 25:40 said, "What you do unto the least of these, you do unto him." What I'm concerned about are the recent national and state headlines about attempts to cut child nutrition services at schools and supports for teachers in terms of cutting federal funding for teachers' grants. And as a nation, I feel like we're sending the wrong message to our young people. We need to be telling them that they're important and especially the people who don't have a voice. We sent these people to Washington and Raleigh, and they seem to be executing this Project 2025 plan. They've written a thousand pages on it, and I think they mean to do what they said. So what we need to do is make sure that we hold our representatives in Washington and Raleigh accountable because I'm sure many of you here believe in strong public schools and food for the children that need it. I mean, these are the people who are our future. Now, so what do we need to do? We need to make sure that granted, there are cuts. We're all in favor of some cuts, but we got to make sure that they're offset by protections for our children. Okay? Teachers, so they don't have to buy their own school supplies. So I just want to say that, you know, the idea of people going to Washington and Raleigh and then cutting funding for schools without protection, well, we have an expression for that where I'm from, and it's that dog don't hunt. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sin. Our next speaker is Ms. Sandy Jarvis.
Thank you very much for your time today. I'd like to introduce myself. I'm Sandy Jarvis, and I'm a Catawba County resident for five years now. I'm the chair of the newly formed Catawba County Chapter of Moms for Liberty. And I just wanted to introduce Moms for Liberty for those who aren't aware of that organization. It's a national grassroots organization. We're in 48 of 50 states now. Moms for Liberty is dedicated to fighting for the survival of America by unifying, educating, and empowering parents to defend their rights at all levels of government. My task today is to introduce our legislative priorities. Our state started the first legislative committee, Four Moms for Liberty, and we're excited to be in Raleigh on March 19th to introduce some topics that we would like the legislators to be aware of. And I thought it would be a good idea to come to all three school boards and introduce our legislation requests. Some of the items are in regard to school health clinics, some proposed changes to the parental bill of rights, issues regarding protection for students and staff while in school, going back to basics in education, so looking at technology, especially in elementary schools, and the additional requirement for a high school diploma to pass a U.S. citizen test, which is the naturalization exam. I do have a handout for you, if that's okay to bring up to you, that has our legislative priorities. The one-pagers. So if any of you would like further information about any of these items, the one-page information that we're handing to the legislators will be available March 19th, and I'd be happy to, I put my email at the bottom, be happy to send you those one-pagers if you're interested. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Jarvis. Next on the agenda are consent items presented by Dr. Stover.
Thank you, Chairman. Members of the board, in front of you are consent items, and we will be asking for your approval this evening.
Is there any discussion on the consent agenda? If not, I need a motion and a second for approval. I have a second. I have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, I ask all who approve for a raise of hand. Next on the agenda is unfinished business, construction updates by Mr. Dan Moore.
Thank you, Chairman Seltzer, members of the board, and Dr. Stover. We've got just a couple photographs of the ongoing progress at Maiden Elementary School. Of course, we're in the new building. Now, the older building has been demolished. They're beginning to chip up that pad where those classrooms and the gym and the cafeteria were located. And our next phase after this will then be to balance that site. We'll have a new entrance for our buses, a bus parking lot, playgrounds, and a lighted recreation field as well. So we're very pleased with the speed and the abilities of our demo crew. They did a great job, and I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have about the project at this time.
What would be the timeline to get the parking done and all that kind of stuff? Would that be over the summer, maybe?
We feel like we'll be fully done with the project by the time the school year starts next year. Always depends on weather, but typically in the summer, it's our drier months. We should be able to make progress, and next school year, we'll have the project completed.
Any further discussion? Thank you, Mr. Moore.
Thank you.
Next up will be new business, approval of the 2024-2025 audit engagement letter and audit contract for fiscal year ending June 30th, 2025. Bye. Davis?
Thank you, Chairman Seltzer, Dr. Stover, and members of the board. So in today's work session, you were able to review the audit contract with Anderson, Smith, and White. This is to audit the district's financials for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2025. And so tonight, we are seeking approval on this contract.
Are there any questions for Ms. Davis?
Mr. Chairman, I make the motion that we approve that audit engagement letter and the contract for the audit.
I'll second.
Motion and second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll ask for a raised and all in favor. That is unanimous. Thank you, Ms. Davis, and you're up next for approval of 2025-2026 budget calendar.
Yes, sir. Thank you. This also was reviewed today, and please make a note that the March 10th date for the budget meeting with the county manager is actually March 12th, and so we would seek approval for this budget calendar as presented with the modification.
Any discussion for Ms. Davis on this point?
Mr. Chairman, again, I make the motion that we approve the 25-26 budget calendar as Ms. Davis presented to us.
I'll second.
Hearing a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll ask for a raised hand for approval of budget calendar. That is unanimous.
Mr. Seltzer. I just wanted to introduce Ms. Davis to our public, just in case. Ms. Davis is our new Chief Finance Officer, former employee, Catawba County Schools graduate, go big blue down there in Maiden, but we're glad to have you, and your first day today with the board was fantastic. So thank you, Ms. Davis.
Next up is approval of quote of new school nutrition vehicle by Mr. Dan Moore.
Thank you, Chairman Seltzer, members of the board. As previously discussed during our work session, the ask for school nutrition to have a new delivery truck, I would ask that you approve the quote from Piedmont Trucks in the amount of $57,060.07 for the school nutrition program.
Any questions for Mr. Moore? I seek a motion and a second.
Make a motion, we approve.
I'll second.
I've heard a motion and a second. Is there any further discussions? Raised hand for all approved. Unanimous.
Thank you.
Approval of 2024-2025 summer learning programs presented by Mr. Lee Miller.
Thank you, Chairman Seltzer, and board members. I'd like to ask for your permission, approval of the summer learning program for '24-'25 school year as presented to you earlier today. There's really three parts to this. There's the remediation and second administration, which is right after the school year ends and the first week of workdays, along with high school credit recovery during that time. And the second part is reading camp, which is a three-week camp, 72 hours that's required by the state for second and third graders who are not on grade level for reading. And then the third part is our jump start, which is just one day now for our rising seventh and ninth graders. We're seeking your approval for that tonight.
Are there any further questions for Mr. Miller? Hearing none, I look for a motion and a second.
I'll make a motion to approve the summer learning plan.
Hearing a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll ask for a vote by a raised hand of approval. That is unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Next up, approval of 2025-2026 school calendar drafts for Challenger Early College High School, Compass Academy, and Catawba Rosenwald Education Center, followed by approval of contract between Catawba County Board of Education and Red Rover Substitute Management System Company. Ms. Ray Thompson.
Thank you, Chairman Seltzer, Dr. Stover, members of the board. You've had the opportunity to review three calendars, one for Compass Program, one for Challenger Early College High School, and one for Catawba Rosenwald Education Center earlier today. I'm coming this evening to ask for your approval of these calendars.
Are there any questions for Ms. Thompson on the subject of the school calendars for College Compass or Catawba Rosenwald Education Center? Not, I need to look for a motion and a second.
Make a motion with all three.
Second that.
Hearing a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? There is no more discussion, how about a raise of hand? Unanimous.
My second item for you this evening is the approval of the contract with Red Rover, which will provide a substitute management program system for all of our staff who require substitute. You have a chance to review the information today. Again, this is a three-year contract, and there is an implementation fee as part of that that is a one-time fee. So I'm looking for your approval this evening.
Are there any questions for Ms. Thompson on this subject?
Mr. Chairman, I make the motion that we approve that contract between our board and Red Rover Substitute Management System.
I'll second.
Hearing a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll ask for a raised hand and all in approval. That is unanimous.
Thank you.
Next up is approval of modular units for Boss Creek Elementary School and St. Stevens Elementary School by Mr. Dan Moore.
Chairman Seltzer, members of the board, earlier today, we discussed the multiple options presented on this spreadsheet. I would ask that you allow Dr. Stover to enter into an agreement based on subsequent approval from the Catawba County Board of Commissioners to fund these units when that meeting is held on the 17th of March. I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Are there any further questions for Mr. Moore on this subject? Not, I need a motion and a second.
Motion, we approve.
I'll second.
Hearing a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, ask for all those in approval for a raised hand. That is unanimous. Thank you, Mr. Moore. Next up is approval of proposed quotes to purchase trained HVAC equipment for Claremont Elementary School and Maiden Middle School.
Thank you, Chairman Seltzer. Earlier today, we discussed the need for HVAC equipment at both Claremont Elementary School and Maiden Middle School. I'm seeking approval for the HVAC equipment at Maiden Middle School in the amount of $1,081,446.22, and also the approval of Claremont Elementary School in the amount of $454,718.39, and I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Are there any further questions for Mr. Moore on this subject? Hearing none, I need a motion and a second for approval.
Motion to approve both of those.
I'll second the motion.
Hearing a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all that approved, raised hand. That is unanimous.
Thank you.
Next up, approval of construction change derivatives and change order for the Bandys High School multipurpose building presented by Mr. Dan Moore.
The first is our construction change directive at Bandys High School for the multipurpose building. It is a decrease of $59,252 for that project based on the original contract. The second is an increase of $52,376 for that project, and the last being the official change order for the entire project in the amount of $311,576 for the multipurpose building, and I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Are there any further questions for Mr. Moore on this subject? Hearing none, I seek a motion and a second for approval.
I'll make a motion to approve the Bandys High School multipurpose, the funds for the multipurpose room.
I'll second.
Hearing a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, I'd like a raised hand for approval. That is unanimous.
Thank you.
Next up is approval of proposed amendments to Catawba County Board of Education Policies 3.6100 Parental Inspection Objection to Instructional Materials and 3.6100 AP objections and challenges to media resources presented by Ms. Crystal Davis.
Yes, Mr. Chairman and members of the board, after review of the proposed changes directed by the board to Policy 3.6100 and Administrative Procedure to 3.6100 objections and challenges to media resources, I am requesting that the board act on whether or not to remove the second, let's see, one, two, in the fourth paragraph in the policy 3.6100, the second sentence, that that second sentence be removed, and in the administrative procedure on the first page, item number 1C, the third sentence be removed in their entirety.
Are there any questions for Ms. Davis on this subject?
Motion.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Barnett. I need, I seek a motion and a second for approval.
Mr. Chairman, I make the motion to approve the changes to the policies presented by Ms. Davis.
I'll second.
I've got a motion and a second. Any further comments?
Mr. Chairman, I have a concern about removing that sentence from Section C of policy or the administrative procedure for 3.6100. I feel like that's in violation of our Policy 3.6110 that says, "We acknowledge that we are a policymaking board and that we designate our instructional personnel to make decisions regarding instructional and media materials." To take out that sentence means that we're taking that away from those, from that district committee. We're removing their right to make that decision.
I appreciate what you said and your stand on that, but I believe that because we are voted in this position and we represent the county, and it would be silencing the board by keeping it unanimous, and I believe it should be just like everything else we vote on. It should be the majority rules, just like any other body, public bodies, or for that matter, any one that I know of.
And I hear what you are saying, Mr. Sigmund, but I think that to remove that right from the teachers, we gave them that right. We asked for their opinion. They've told us what we think. I think if we go against what our teachers tell us, then it needs to be a unanimous decision by the board and not just by majority. Often, it's been three to four.
I feel like that making it a unanimous decision is taking the voice away from the board, and we have people that elected us into our positions. So I feel like that we should be able to be the voice of our constituents.
And in what way does this take away the voice of the board?
It's unanimous. Each one of us have a voice on the board. So if each one of us have a voice on the board, then by being unanimous, that means that it has to be the whole board as one. We all, each one, have different opinions.
I just want to make notice that to take this away from our teachers is not something I'm for. I'm for backing our teachers, and I don't want to remove that right from them.
My thing is, is that we are not taken away from our teachers, and I feel like every time we have this discussion, and this is probably like the third time that we've had this discussion, I feel like we are not taken away from what they believe. However, since we are making decisions and when, like if the books are appealed, we are the last, I guess, the last, I guess, the board, we are the last decision-maker in this process. So we have the final decision. That's why we have this process in place.
Why do we have the teacher committee, then? If we're not going to take their word for it and their professional opinion, why do we even have them?
It's just like a court system. It's just like whenever you can appeal a case, that's what we have. I mean, if we're not, what's the point of having a policy in place if we're not going to follow the policy? If we're going through the policy, we have the right as a board to actually make decisions, and we are the final decision-maker, just like we are on several things as far as like what we approve for the school system.
I agree. That's why I think we should follow Policy 3.6110 that says we give them the decision-making right. It'll just have to come out in the vote, I understand. I just want to go on the record that I am for teachers making that decision. That's their right. I mean, we wrote a letter to the state asking for them to have a raise, but then we turn around and don't trust them to make a decision that we give to them in policy.
We don't trust them. We respect your opinion. We respect their opinion. We all have one, and we're not taking anything away from them. I don't feel like...
And that's your opinion, Mr. Sigmund.
And it's to agree to disagree.
Dr. Barnett, appreciate your comments and respect your comments. And as I've stated before in the past, I have served on previous boards, church boards, committees. I'm... No board I've ever served on has required a unanimous vote, and there's times that just if, for example, you look at the, the planning board that reports to the county commissioners, they may present a plan, and the commissioners have that authority, just like all these decisions that were brought before us tonight, whether it be the financial audit, things that Mr. Moore bring to us, the final decision lies with the board, and I respect your opinion, but I think it should just be a, a majority of the board members on the final decision of any decision that we make.
I think you maybe misunderstand, Mr. Morris. I'm not asking for us to make unanimous decisions on everyone, just on this particular policy.
Yes, ma'am. Yeah, I understand that. I'm just, you know, I disagree, to disagree with you, but I feel even on this policy should stand as a simple majority rules.
I think the vote shows where you stand for teachers tonight.
Thank you for the discussion. Is there any further discussion? Let me see, a raised hand of all that approve of the motion and second. David.
Thank you.
All right, we removed the closed session, so now we will move on to our open session approval of personnel recommendations and approval of the addendum to personnel recommendations presented by.
Thank you, Chairman Seltzer. In front of you are our personnel recommendations, and we are asking your approval of those this evening.
Are there any questions for Dr. Stover on either the approval of personnel recommendations or approval for addendum to the personnel recommendations? Hearing none, I need a motion and a second.
Make a motion that we approve it.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, I look for a raised hand and approval. That is unanimous for both. And announce to the audience the addition of a Catawba County Board of Education special called meeting on Monday, March 17th at 6:00 p.m. for a facilities update from McKissick Architecture. Unless there's anything else, I'm looking for a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Hearing a second, hearing a motion and a second, I look for approval to adjourn by raise of hand. That is unanimous.